Follow the meeting's order. And we'll do a quick roll call. Chris Boyd's here. Jane Demento. Sarah James-Morris. Melissa Gamble.
Yeah.
Honor Burserm. Jason Palutro. Kimberly Lewis.
Yeah.
Uh, kind of public hearing. It's an updated 3A public hearing will be all the longest, but we have a joint session. So tonight we're just having an updated presentation from Arcade Gene based on comments from both the public and the planning board at last month's hearing. We'll begin with Arcade Gene's presentation and updates, and then we'll read some letters into it. Take it away. Is this open?
All members of the planning board, members in the public. Tonight, we're going to be presenting a refined scenario for Windrook's MBTA compliance based on comments from the planning board at the last meeting. So just wanted to start really quickly with the last time we were here, just a quick meeting recap of where we left off on June 10th. So if you recall, we were looking at four districts at that time, which would be modeled with the MBTA compliance model. We were looking at three districts to be considered for MBTA 3A multi-family districts, one covering the Seal Harbor area, one along Shirley Street, and one along in the Governor's Park area. And then last time, we also talked about leveraging the Central Business District as a mandatory mixed use offset. So this would not be part of our 3A districts, but we can use the units that we modeled there essentially to reduce the 882 units, in this case by 221, so that the remaining 600 some odd units would be what would be required in the other 3A districts. So that's where we left off, and this technically is a compliance scenario, but taking some feedback from the last meeting, working with town's that whole way to refine this a little bit more, we have some additional information to share tonight. This is just showing that the CBD district has the offset district that we modeled follows the zoning boundaries that are in place today. And as you can see, the district technically has a capacity using the MBTA compliance model of 343, but we're only allowed to use a maximum of up to 25% of the town's unit requirement. So 25% of the 882 is the 221 units. So that's a number that we have to carry forward if the town chooses to leverage the CBD as part of its compliance application. So that leaves us with the remainder of the 661 units in the actual 3A multi-family vibrant districts. So just to get right into it for the recommended compliance scenario that we're bringing forward tonight. So what we've done since the last meeting is took a look at King &amp; Seal Harbor Governor's Park in terms of the boundaries, exactly the same as we presented last time. But there were some comments from planning board members about taking a look at Shirley Ave District, both the district boundaries themselves, as well as the potential to reduce the minimum lot size in the zoning to see if we could bring some additional parcels into compliance and therefore generate some unit capacity at Shirley. What we found as we were looking more closely is there's one additional requirement in the MBTA communities, in the MBTA bylines. And that is for the total gross acreage of land that a community is considering for its 3A district. So in this case, let's take the example in the table at the top, which is 27.6 acres. That's the gross acres of Seal Harbor plus the gross acres of Governor's Park, Governor's Park gives you 27.6. There's a part of the requirements that we have to follow that says 50% of your total gross acreage, so 50%, basically what's called 28 acres, has to be located in one single contiguous district, meaning we have to have one district of 14 acres. When we add Seal Harbor Governor's Park and formerly Shirley Ave, it created a situation where the 15 acres of Governor's Park was not enough to cover the 50%. By dropping the Shirley district and focusing just on Seal Harbor and Governor's Park, you can see Governor's Park would allow us to get up to basically 30.6 total acres, where right now we have 27. So we're good if we use these two districts as our 3A compliant districts. We meet all the requirements there. It also allows us to focus on two districts instead of three, so we're actually, we have one less district that we're looking at. And it also lets us focus on two districts that have a lot of existing units on them already. We'll show more information about that any minute. So we moved forward with doing all the modeling work for Seal Harbor Governor's Park and dropping on Shirley. So you can see, we have 27.6 total acres, and we have one district at 15.3, which covers our 50% acreage. All those districts are also greater than 5 acres, which is another requirement that we need to look at. So in terms of the acreage requirements for Windrook, I think we're good on all those. We modeled in models for the unit capacity and the density. So we needed to come up with the 661 units, we're at 674, so pretty, pretty close, really close. It's always good to have a little bit of buffer in there, just in case something moves back to the state during their compliance review, so we have a little bit of buffer there. So we need unit capacity, also that allows us to get to the 800, over the 882, because again, we're leveraging the Central Business District as our offset district, picking up the 221 units there. And then from a density perspective, you can see we're at 26.7, so we're above the 15 units, the 15 rolling in to the 80. So with these two districts, it looks like we have at least a compliance scenario to present to the planning board for your decisions whether to go forward with this or not. Just to dig in a little bit further into both Seal Harbor Governor's Park, we just wanted to share a little bit more about where that district is and what's there today on those parcels. So the map on the right just shows an existing aerial view. The blue outline, the blue kind of overlay over that just shows you the boundaries of the district that's being proposed and the parcels that it covers. We also showed you, are showing you how many existing units are in the different buildings that are on those parcels today. These come directly from the town's assessor's office, and it's from all the tax records that they pulled, just showing how many units are there today. On the top of that line, then underneath, it shows the modeled capacity. And you can see in almost all the cases, the modeled capacity is actually less than what's there on the ground today. And if you look at the table on the left, where we show gross acres, net acres, you'll also see a couple, you'll see a different line there that says existing units. So within this Seal Harbor district, what's shown in the blue overlay there, there's existing 394 units today on the ground built. Then the T model under the zoning that we're testing has a unit capacity of 333 units, which is 61 units less than what already exists today on the ground. So what that means is, let's say somebody, let's say something happened here in my example, very extreme example from last time. Something terrible happened here and everything got wiped, and we started with a paragraph. Someone comes in, they buy the property where the existing owner wants it, wants to rebuild. They would have a choice. They could either follow the base zoning that's already in place today, maybe follow the rules that are already in place today. They could go through a special permit process and everything that the town would require today through that process, and try to rebuild what they have today. Or they could go through and use the overlay, the 3A overlay district, and technically, they could put back less units and less density than what's here today. The same would be true for Governor's Park. Again, the map on the right shows you, the yellow kind of overlay and outline shows you the district being proposed, the existing number of units and the modeled capacity of those two parcels. And again, today, there are 393 existing units here. The modeled unit capacity is 341, so again, we're about 52 units under what already exists here on the ground. Same zoning application would apply if something were to happen or someone wanted to do something different here, they would obviously have to follow zoning, so they'd have a choice, follow the base zoning that already exists here today. Or if 3A is adopted in Windrook, they could go through that process, and again, they'd be able to put back 50 some odd fewer units than what already exists here today. So just to recap, this two district scenario, and again, leveraging the Central Business District with a mandatory mixed use offset, it would meet our minimum land area requirements of 12 acres. It would meet our 50% minimum contiguous district size, we need one that's around 14 acres, we have one that's around 15 acres. It would meet our minimum contiguous percentage of 50% of net acreage. It meets the, we, all of our, both districts are both 5 acres in size, so we meet that requirement. We're over our unit capacity of 882, and we're over our density requirement in this scenario. And here's just a recap of what we had, leave this one out. Are there any questions just on that before we get to the, unless Chris, will we just cover the zoning tweaks?
Yeah, I think, what needs to change the baseline zoning or existing zoning tweaks could be helpful to walk through?
You can do that here in the chat.
I know there's a question that came up last time, and I'm sure people who've been at home or have a unit or any location's concerned about, was, if any, is the impact on 3A to existing condo docs or units as they exist today?
So I asked this question of the state, and again, the state is not an attorney, and I'm not an attorney, so if you have specific questions about your condo docs, you should consult an actual attorney. But their response was, those condominiums and those condo docs were all done under existing zoning. This would just be an overlay on top of that existing zoning, giving a property owner additional flexibility to do something at some point in time in the future if they wanted to. So according to the state, this would not do anything to any condo docs that are already in place. Again, if the condominium, the entire condominium development were to go away tomorrow, and someone were to build under 3A, you would just have to follow the zoning that's part of that overlay, or again, they could choose to rebuild under the, under the town's existing zoning, so they would have a choice there. But as far as the state's concerned, it wouldn't have any impact on existing condominium docs today. But again, if you're a condo owner and you have specific questions, best of ways, consult an attorney.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. I know these are two density hotbed areas now, condo docs and residential buildings, I'm sure people are really in a different sort of concern. The tweaks is only going to walk through.
Sure. So just a couple of things. One thing we talked about last time, so in the CBD district, if we want to utilize that district as a mandatory mixed use offset district, there is a requirement in the MBTA bylines that says in order to do that, the community is not allowed to mandate parking requirements for, first for a commercial, for any commercial development in that district. So if reading through the town's bylaws that govern parking in the CBD specifically, there is a provision where a property owner developer could pay a fee in lieu to the town to, basically in lieu of providing actual physical parking. So I brought that forward to the state, and I said, technically, this could be a way that they could get out of providing that parking. Would that be acceptable, instead of having to have the town completely remove its parking requirements for commercial development? And they agreed to that. The only caveat is, this is currently regulated by special permit, this fee in lieu provision, so we would need the town to change that just to be part of your site plan review instead of a special permit. If the town, if that's acceptable to the town, then that appears to be acceptable to the state, and that will allow us to leverage that 221 unit offset.
So just so we're clear about the parking regulation today, it's a pay in lieu of which a developer can opt to exercise, to buy out of the parking requirement. That's exercised through a special permit process. This would be parking, pay in lieu of what exists without a special permit, only applicable to commercial space. Resident, all residential units need to park at code, like for units, right? So we cannot be, can't even pay in lieu of to the residential park, right? So you have to provide parking on site.
Yep.
And then the commercial space, which would be ground floor tenancy in the CBD, exercises that in lieu of, if they pay in lieu of, but they just have the right to exercise that in our special permit.
Yep.
So that's a zoning change we need to make in our work before passing adoption of 3A and other legislation.
Yeah. So I think if you send it to the state with this in it, it's going to get kicked back, and I don't think they're going to let us count the 221 units.
I have a question. Can we say that we're in the process of updating our zoning to accommodate that, or does it have to be done by the time we submit this?
Yeah, I think it's going to need to be done by the time you submit your final compliance application, because what they're going to do is they're going to review not only the zoning for the 3A districts, but the AG's office and HLC is doing a very thorough review of every community's existing zoning bylaws to make sure that there aren't any, any hurdles that may be buried somewhere in the text that you don't know about, because it was adopted 20 years ago, you know, who knows? So I know they are doing a really thorough review of existing bylaws, which is exactly why I tried to go through this with a fine toothed call, and I found that, and wanted to point that out.
Yep, that's helpful to our bit. We have to study the district, but I think it's really the banks that have on site commercial parks today. The rest of the market is street parking and common law. So it was pretty much what I said. Any, any take in view to zoning in Seal Harbor?
Yeah. So for the two overlays for Seal Harbor and Governor's Park, we tried our best to mimic the dimensional requirements, the parking requirements, the heights, everything as the zoning existed in for those areas. There's really only one thing that we wanted to bring to your attention that we do, we need to ask without changing, which is in Governor's Park for the lot area for the dwelling unit, is currently 2,500 square feet per dwelling unit. In order to, once we dropped Shirley, we needed to make up those units that would be part of the Shirley district in these two, in these two 3A districts. In order to bring the unit capacity up, we needed to drop the lot area for dwelling unit from 2,500 square feet at Governor's Park to 1,900, same thing in Seal Harbor from 2,000 square feet to 1,600 square feet. Again, the unit capacity that we showed, I think both were, you know, in that 300 range. That's the unit capacity that we, that results from that change. But I just wanted to point out that that is a deviation from what's in the regulations today of the baseline. But again, in order to just get the unit capacity up to meet the 661 units that we need in those two districts, that change is what we need. We tested a couple of other parameters, like could we change the lot coverage percentage? Like right now, one of the districts is 20%. We tried to say, well, could you go to like 30 or 40%? If that might be a more powerful change, but this is really what governs the density of the unit count, because you're essentially taking the entire square footage of a parcel, and you're dividing it by, in this case, let's say 2,500 square feet, and that's your units. So that's the density cap. So that's really the thing that we need to change in the zoning in order to get the units up high enough to get to 660. But again, in both cases, the unit capacity that we're projecting from the model is less than what's on the ground today, about 50 to 60 units in each.
So this is a change to base zoning language, right? And the additional density units we see there were accomplished through special permit. Is that the assumption that, the units we see at Governor's Park that are greater than the 3A would be allowed on that same land area?
Same unit.
Yes. Were likely able to accomplish through special permit?
I assume so, yeah.
No, they would not have been allowed to that.
I assume they were done through special permit, since I don't think Windrook has a, has a right multi-family district that would allow that, otherwise our job would be done, if you had what was already. So I'm assuming they were all done by special permit. But Chris, one thing, just to clarify, I think we were working under the assumption that you would be wanting to do overlay districts for the 3A and not touch, not touch the zoning that's there today. So when we say changes to the base zoning, the 1,900 and the 1,600 square foot changes, we would, we were envisioning incorporating those into overlays, not, not touching the zoning that exists today. Is that?
That makes sense.
Okay.
So this, I guess what I like about that is it feels like the rare case that the overlay district in terms of unit density is less stringent than based on, right, often based on height, setback area would be more restricted. And if we say it's the one case that seems upon that, unit density would be less restricted and allowed for a period. Am I misunderstanding that?
Well, it depends on what the goal of the overlay is. Communities often use overlay districts to provide more flexibility than what is in the base zone, to try to encourage something that is a little bit above and beyond what you might be able to do under the base. That's usually where we see overlays. But in this case, it's really about just trying to get to the unit capacity that we need and what is the mechanism that we can leverage to get there. From our review, it seems to be the lot area per dwelling unit just needs to come down a little bit to get those units. We thought this would be the kind of least, kind of like least impactful change. You could, there are options where we could add stories of height, for example, but I imagine that would be less palatable than making a change like this.
Right, right. Not be today, there's only around what exists on both Seal Harbor and Governor's Park to be done today, right? They have to go through the special permit process for most of those projects, so that 3A still creates less units if they're, if they're a sample. Just, just so we're clear, I think we understand the concept that if Seal Harbor was working on today, we know we can build back under 3A, and that is less units. So the overlay is the least impactful for breaking that. What could be built if nothing was touched on Seal Harbor and Governor's Park, all those buildings that we did exist today? That would require a what to do? A subdivision that gets a lot area size, which would not those type of processes work anymore?
To rebuild what's there today?
No, if, just for clarity, I think for the room, if Governor's Park, the built environment of Governor's Park, which will remain as it exists today, and developer were coming and subdivided any parcel of unbuilt and attempting to build something there using 3A, is that possible if so, if we don't do that? It would be a lot minimum size, the same setbacks as the base zoning, unable to access 3A through that, or is the other way to access 3A is to just, then these buildings are definitely re-invested? Is there any question you want to click?
No, it's clear, I'm just trying to think, did you have the answer on the fly? Yeah, I mean, I guess it immediately would be possible that someone could purchase all of that and they could tear the buildings down. And I guess they could then potentially subdivide the parcels in a different way, but because, because of the area of the district is fixed at, we were talking about here, let's say for Governor's Park, the area of the district is fixed at 15 acres, and we have a density restriction in this case of 1,900 square feet per unit, that same, the number of units really can't, I don't see how the number of units under 3A could change, even if someone subdivided the parcels up again, because it's still the same amount of land area, so probably, yeah, I think it would stay the same, even if they, you know, demolished all the buildings and came in with something to subdivide the property, because it's really the density that gets, we're still divided into tiers where you can be.
So you have a question to flip right over?
Yeah. So our subconsult on the fly, just two other great things. I meant state, he's adding a yellow highlight, so I'm sorry. The, I think the latter question we answered, I'm assuming that there'll be, there'll be overlay districts. One question that, we don't have to talk about this tonight, but at some point, when we talk more about the details of the zoning, just think about, do you want them to be two completely separate overlay districts, like one called Seal Harbor, or one called Governor's Park? Or would you like to have an overlay called MBTA 3A overlay with two sub-districts underneath? And I only ask that because I think Emily was thinking, if it's two completely separate overlays, a lot of the text and descriptions of things, and a lot of the dimensional stuff, and the tables that accompany them will just be very repetitive, whereas you could say, here's our MBTA 3A overlay district, this is the like purpose of the districts. Then we could have a dimensional table that has all the dimensional requirements, and then just a column for Seal Harbor and a column for Governor's Park. So we could almost like truncate the zoning a little bit more.
If you only make difference between the two districts, it's going to be the unit density as you outlined in 1900.
Height, yeah, height, I think is different. And lot coverage, so there'll be some differences, but you could see those differences right in the table. So, you know, we have a line in the table for height, one of those 3, one of those 6. We have a line, a line item for lot, lot area per dwelling unit, 1,600, 1,900, wherever we're using. It's just a matter of how you want to structure it, because a lot of it will probably be repetitive. So it's just, it's like, do you want to make this, do you want to make your zoning viable longer, or try to make it, you know, as short?
Good question. I personally don't mind repetition in aid of climate, right? So if they are different in some key areas, we should understand what those are and apply consultation, so.
Okay.
I think the table should be represented on the way, a table of graphics, understanding the, those districts outline. But if you say Emily is your subconsulting person, I might be interested in next meeting to hear her interpretation and feedback on that, and if that leads to confusion, you will process. If we had 10 districts, who might be?
Ah, definitely, yeah. And then just about the floodplain, she had flagged this, I'll do my best to explain it, and I'm not, as I'm the expert on this, but in, in the floodplain bylaw, both of these districts do have a little bit of floodplain area on their, kind of on their edges, so I think whatever's written about floodplains in the zoning will end up pertaining to these two areas. Emily was mentioning to me that there is some language in the floodplain piece of the bylaw that says like, if something were to happen there, or like a building were to be abandoned or vacated, there's some language in there, I'll have to get the specifics, maybe we can talk with the town council about this a little more too, that might not allow them to kind of go back in and re-occupy those buildings because they're in the floodplain without some extra scruping on that. So that's just one thing, when we come back next time, I just wanted to flag that, that we want to look at. And again, that would be a change that we could incorporate into the overlays only, I think, and not into the rest of the town zoning, which could potentially make it a lot easier so that we're not changing everything in the town, but making whatever changes we need to be very specific to the 3A districts. So we'll, we'll bring that back as well. Those were the only, that was really the only, other than the, what we talked about with the fee in lieu, those were the only two things that Emily had flagged in the existing zoning bylaw that might potentially come up in a state review. Otherwise, she felt like things looked really good with the existing bylaw.
Great. Just one question for what on the table being shown in the districts.
I have a question. A couple of questions. So previously, there was a question about if the law were to change in the future, would we then be forced to comply with whatever that new law was? And I think you're sort of understanding it, sort of the way that we adopt FEMA bylaws, if a new law comes in, we review it and then we choose to adopt it. Do you know anything about, like, say, if we adopt this and if the law were to change, if we were to be forced to comply?
I'll, I'll answer part of this right away. Due to the situation here, we're in conversation with the state, that's what that means. It has happened clearly out there. But the way that we understand processes, if the law changes, it would likely result in readaptation of the regulation. So like a floodplain overlay and joint hearing that happened recently, we have to scriptize the regulations and readapt. Uh, if the regulations change, likely it would depend on what the regulation is. If it's impactful to our districts, if it's impactful to unit density, uh, if it changes the number of units, then we're interpreting that as a readoption, that we go through another voting process and then we clear up the process. Smaller changes to text or wording would likely be adopted, not the CDO. But that question is out to the state for a formal answer. And as soon as we hear a formal answer, we'll stay on that process, we're pushing for it, uh, we'll go with that.
Great, thank you. And then just something else I've been thinking about when we talked about, we kind of went through this process last year. We had talked about our concerns with climate resiliency and onsite drainage and, you know, trees. And we kind of talked about like how doing these zoning overlays, we might want to incorporate some of that language as part of the, um, district overlay. Because of how we're approaching it now, I don't know that that's as much of a concern, but I just wanted to make sure since we talked about it previously that we just trust that maybe it's something that we look at townwide in the future, because we've been talking about that too.
Question for Eric, yes, I don't think that, I think we do 3A. But, uh, just for clarity, I don't think we can change the language of our zoning to include other areas for 3A. We can be, floodplain resiliency, uh, open space requirements, plantable waters, stormwater retention requirements for onsite storage. Any guideline that's got a separate zoning exercise or can that be added?
Um, so open space requirement, yes, absolutely. You can have that as part of 3A. That's in many communities zoning ordinances by laws. Um, the other thing to know is you are still allowed, even though this could be as a, as a rights zoning, you're still allowed to do site plan review as part of this. So it's not like the town has to relinquish or the planning board has to relinquish all control. You just can't have, um, as much scrutiny as a spec, as with a special permit. You know, where that decision, obviously you have criteria for a special permit, but there's a law for that you can require there. So you could still set up standards within your site plan review. And Emily's done a lot of this with communities. So I think she's gotten really good at finding where that balance is between too much in the site, site plan review and, and too little. So she can help you think through that and what types of design standards you might want to include, um, in your site plan review process so that you might be able to address, yeah, things in landscape treatments and, um, yes, certainly, you know, if there's something around climate resiliency. So that's definitely a conversation that we need to have. We just have to make sure that it's not, that we're not putting up major barriers where the state's going to say, okay, now you're really creating a hurdle that's akin to a special permit.
Yeah, but that makes me think that we can potentially control setbacks as well.
Oh, yeah.
So that would prevent any subdivisions of any existing that's happening because if you have enough of a setback, then like why would you develop?
Yep, um, so setbacks, absolutely, that's in our modeling. We modeled setbacks, um, as part of our modeling. Uh, the only thing I would say in setbacks is I would say anything probably deeper than 50 feet. I think in the one district we're modeling, 50 feet for the front mirror and sides. Anything deeper than that, I think the state's going to flag as you're trying to, not that you're trying to do this, but they might view it as you're trying to constrict the development envelope by setting really, uh, aggressive setbacks. So again, we can totally look at setbacks, but just keep in mind, if we make them too deep, um, they will probably flag that.
Can we review again the central business district and just what that means for, uh, commercial and mixed-use buildings?
Sure, I'd have you go to any slide if you, if you want. The map on the right just shows the outline of the districts, the differences in the colors. Um, where you see the hatching, that's the two and a half story limitation for parcels of the CBD that are block residential, existing residential properties. Then everything else without the hatch in pinkish purple color, we go up to four stories and right. So that's just the difference in the map there. And then, uh, we took all of the existing, um, dimensional requirements, parking requirements, height, um, for what's in the zoning bylaw today that regulates development in the central business district. And that's what we used directly in the model. We didn't make any interpretations of that. We took it, you know, verbatim out of that and put that into the MBTA compliance model. And we ran, when we ran the model for the CBD area that's outlined there, the model said it had a unit capacity of 343 units. But again, um, we're only allowed to use 25% of the town's unit requirement, which is 221 units. So it's, it's basically the, I don't know what you'd say, the lesser of the, of the two in this case. So we had to stay in the lesser, which is 221. So again, we're not proposing, other than the small parking is in, in our FIA Lou, we're not proposing the town make any changes to the CBD zoning, everything will remain as is. We're just able to use this through the flexibility of the guidelines as this offset district.
Okay. Any questions for, for the board?
No.
Okay, um, I mean, this is great work from our conversation last time. The goal is least impactful, I think that this is an option. While keeping our existing zoning in place. There's a letter from the Winter of Historic Commission, I don't know if you might have interpreted, we'll have to read it for you. Sure. So, uh, July 16th. Just wanted to read this on the record, certainly is aware. Uh, we continue to do this as on the lines of command for the boards. This is the Winter of Historic Commission. Two members of the planning board, the Winter of Historic Commission, in this last meeting, overwhelming the need to request our planning board, town council take no further action on 3A and simply vote no to its adaptation. Now, as general laws, chapter 40, section D, establish local historic commissions for the purpose of preservation, protection, and development of archaeological assets in town and cities or towns whose purpose of protecting and preserving such places. And may make recommendations to the city council and the Massachusetts Historic Commission certify such places as historical or archeologically suited in that context. The Winter of Historic Commission, with its efforts on prior community development office, identified five districts which met their criteria to be considered historic districts. And one of those areas is Midcap Square, San Diego Historic District, which had been placed by the state and national register of historic places. All of these areas would be affected by 3A zoning. 3A zoning would eliminate the possibility of these districts to be considered and not be in the national register of historic places. Former president of the National Trust for Historic Preservation once stated it best, "Or livability is dismissed as trees are removed, the bankyards are eliminated, and sunlight is blocked by bulky new structures all the way up to property lines. Economic and social diversity are reduced by costly and faux chateau, which is more affordable houses." If we accept 3A and all it allows, the state first intitiate our local zoning and build up its ability to sell in historic districts and preserve our local architecture and historic assets, we cannot withhold this. We need to continue to work for preservation throughout the community, nominate the forward meeting, identify districts as historic and incorporate historic zoning bylaws. Sincerely, the Winter of Historic Commission. Uh, Julie, I don't want to respond, but I know if you wanted to outline, uh, I, I'm personally, unfortunately, not clear what the other four districts are outside of Midcap that were striving for, uh, historic districts.
Highland.
Highland.
Highland. Bishro.
The Bishro. Yep. The Center of Historic.
Yeah, we have, the centers, the Midcap area, the Sett, that's bottom there.
Can you step up to the right of the podium, please, and sit down?
What they're talking about right now down the center, that whole area is in historic district. And there was controversy when they were talking about the fire station. We're already destroying the area and our best is we're putting up buildings there right now that are destroying the area. When they started to build the, um, for kids only, we were instrumental in forcing, um, that building to be built to look like it did in. The problem with 3A is you're going to allow them to come in and, and take all the areas that are not going to be with the bend anymore. With the zoning is getting out of control here in Windsor. We are not forcing them to comply with areas that look like old Windsor. We go to communities such as Marblehead, Rockport, we love those areas because they're, they are forced to comply with areas and sections and houses that look like that. Yet we come to Witherup and we say to them, okay, you have to have your area built a certain way. No, we're not saying that. We're just saying reduce common sense and say, let's force everybody to look like something that's new. The reason why, for example, the Cumming School looks so beautiful is because if you look at it closely, the path that's next to the EB New School, those bricks look like the EB New School, the peaks look like the EB New School, it blends in. If 3A comes in and we allow it to come in, the zoning, for example, is saying we're going to limit parking, we're going to eliminate that permit, that's crazy. We don't have enough parking now. There are many trucks, trucks, pickup trucks. I have them on my street. There are pickup trucks that many people go to work every day, contractors. They do not put commercial plates on their trucks. They have residential parking plates on their trucks. They park on the street. And yet they use their trucks every day for work. And they park on the street. So when you said, well, it's only going to give, we're going to allow them to, to pay money, $2,000, and not be, and then be able to, to pay that fee so that they cannot have to have parking being designated to get five, so that they don't have to have underground parking, off-street parking. That's easy enough to define. Just give them a residential park plate, they can park on the street. Well, well, Mr. Jones here, she doesn't have parking space. She doesn't get that special permit. She can't pay $2,000. She, she gets, she gets screwed, excuse me, but she does. But that contractor, he, he, he gave me his $2,000. 3A bypasses a lot of the things that Windsor's zoning is on, unfortunately. But we all know, we see it happening all around our town. And we don't put restrictions. Yes, if we want to fill that three-story building or that four-story building, put restrictions on it. Make it plenty like they do in Marblehead, like they do in Rockport. When we walk down those streets, we all say, wow, this looks really great. That's because those towns force them to follow guidelines. Because every time we go there, we say, wow.
Great, thank you.
We'll go to a bit of a comment, Jack, for just one second. So I want to clarify one thing, then ask a question. The, the, the parking in New York is, uh, just so you know, the intent, it's $20,000 space. And the $20,000 is geared towards those to fund to preserve and maintain that commercial lot. And it's only for commercial spaces. So La Siesta, uh, restaurant downtown couldn't pay for their parking room. They didn't have to do that at Rishon, they didn't have to demand. Uh, we don't have, this is a question for how we adopt zoning. We don't have any design standards in this town. Uh, design is subjective, there is nothing like Marblehead that kind of outlines that we need to use, the historic character we need to create. If we were to place design standards in the CBD or other areas, would that be viewed by the state as overly restrictive, trying to make it so much more cautious? Or is that, uh, a, a fair process to have?
So I think the state has said you can have design standards. Um, you just have to be careful about how restrictive they are. So if you're going to do things like, you know, you have to use this exact window, this exact siding, this exact, then they may say, no. But you said, we want the buildings generally to look like this, this type of form, these, you know, this wide range of material, these types of roof lines, you know, I think they would view that as.
So it's something we could adopt and add and be part of the section.
Later on, yeah.
Yeah. To, to really, to, to. Good feedback, all right, uh, full comment. Let's try, let's try to keep our time to about three minutes if we can, somebody joining.
Jack Dow, we sent one, one time, winter present. Maybe some advice or question directed to Matt, to Matt? Maybe some advice. Would you instruct the people in this room to wait for the built-in case to be decided before anybody in this town would take up a vote or talk? I think it would be a strong.
I'm not answering that question, that's not my job.
But then, for the board, would you, for the board of the planning board, would you wait until the built-in case is settled before you make a determination of, to answer the state of whether these districts are going to be?
And, and I can only, you're asking for a personal opinion, right? Because it is. No, I'm asking for personal, I'm asking for board. We're not going to vote on our answer to the question before we answer the question, right? So need a uniform approach, it's a personal opinion. I would say that, just so you know, we could make a recommendation to town council. Town council can adopt historic compliance. We can still fight the constitutionality of this at any time. So that's one package, so we're fair. The other is that these constitutional laws, if they're right, it's advantageous to tax pay dollars to understand those who are investing money to see what their process is.
So you're undetermined at this point?
Uh, I, I know my role in the planning board is to make a recommendation to town council. That's what we're going to vote, we're going to make a recommendation.
We just want to state that the west side of Paul Lee Street may or may not be in the center of this area. There's a question at this one, excuse me. Whether the west side of Paul Lee Street is in the center of this area. I want to state that nine tenths of that property, including 150 block and all, all the way around, the she's a, um, Pauling, Pauling, Lincoln, Perfield, that's what it is, is a parkland. So I don't want anybody to get up here next week or something and say, oh, we, we are all in the center of the business district. It's parkland, you can't go across the street. I want everybody to understand that you cannot do anything with that property unless you go by, like, a dispositional land. I've been saying this for seven years. There's no survey. Someone said we got $2 million dollars, that might be enough to do a survey. So the survey should be done first and everything that comes after that. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Fuchell. And I've come tonight to make it perfectly clear that this law does. I think we're sidestepping some crucial issues that are not being addressed and is misleading to the residents of this community. This law is clear. They want an increased development, they want an increased occupancy, they want to reduce zoning restrictions, they want to have designated zones that don't have any protection from the zoning board of what's going to go on in our zone. This is a flagrant violation of our constitutional rights. And the job of the board is not just to follow orders and say, oh, the task is to come up with designated zone. Your responsibility is to protect the residents of this town and to exercise our authority. You have the authority, that's why you exist, to have rules and regulations that protect us. You have the authority. That's why you exist, to have rules and regulations that protect us. You're going to allow the state to step in. You're relinquishing your power and you're delegating it to the state. The state's going to come in and dictate to us through mandated compliance what we can and cannot do. We have constitutional rights by you designating zones. And I don't care what zone you designate. The citizens of that zone will no longer have protection from our local ordinances. The citizens of that zone will be discriminated against. It's called unequal protection under the law. It's unfair protection under the law. Laws are supposed to uniformly apply to every resident, not to select groups. They're depriving us in designated zones of our rights. It's unfair and it's unconstitutional. They're moving forward even if complicit in an unjust and unfair law. It's disgraceful that the town would allow this to happen and we're sidestepping a very important issue. All this discussion about zones and development. Is this development going to be in Seal Harbor? Is development going to be a part? We don't need a lot of development, but the law also allows us to change existing units. If we have a two or three bedroom in Seal Harbor, there would be nothing under this law to stop me from a three bedroom to convert it to a six bedroom. There'd be no, nothing wrong with me instead of having four to five people to put 12 people. The law does not say that you have room size requirements, you have number of occupants. All of that is lifted. We're taking away all those restrictions. And you're wrong about the condo laws. And if you look so strongly believing the base, the not being superseded, you're wrong. There's case laws, there's documents to show that Chapter Law 183 deals with condos. We are not protected, all condo dogs are not protected. The state will supersede those condo dogs. It's limiting us into a sense of complicity. It's limiting us to be too into complying with this and will never be able to change it once you say yes. And again, you're wrong about thinking that the state can't change things. The state can come in, they can change, they can adjust, they can modify the zoning requirements and will have no recourse if we're in that designated zone.
Both no.
Both no.
My suggestion is that this board should do nothing right now. You should not be proposing designated zones unless you're willing to volunteer your neighborhood to be a designated zone. If the people in this area, which they're not, let's say, raise your hand, is anyone on the board in a designated zone? Is anyone willing to live in a designated zone and have the impact on your property and your rights like we will have? It's unconscionable that you allow this to proceed. I also want to say we've become a sacrificial land. You've created a division in this town. I can hear the sighs of relief. Thank God it's not in my neighborhood. Let's stick it in Seal Harbor, let's stick it in Governor's Park, and the rest of us don't have to worry. Of course, they have to worry because of all the other implications to this terrible law. They're picking people against people, zones against zones, making desirable neighborhoods next to undesirable neighborhoods. Who's going to want to buy in Seal Harbor if I now put in six bedrooms and have 12 occupants? Then my next door neighbor can't say a thing about that. There goes our property values. We have no say over what our neighbors are doing, no matter where you put that zone.
That's the truth.
Say you can give them a task to put designated zones. I challenge you to a bigger task. The task is to say no, to protect the citizens of this town and to do your job of exercising the power that you've been entrusted by this community to exercise. We don't need to take action right now. The deadline is December. What is the rush of designated zones, having the town council, having a vote, yes? Do you think you're going to undo a yes once this says? Wait for Milton, see what the constitutional law is challenged and said. Join those communities and let's know what we're doing before we get sold down the river or thrown under the bus for whatever analogy you want to use. Please say no. Don't move forward with any zones. Don't move forward with any vote. And make sure we know what we're doing about condo laws and zones and every other protection that they're supposed to have that we're being deprived of. Thank you.
Question about the minimum lot size amount. Do you mind going to that slide? Um, so in your modeling, you used the 900, 1600. What was the decision to go with that number rather than what is currently there, right? So you get a different number than what is currently at Seal Harbor or what is currently at Governor's Park with? Because in your example, if, you know, Seal Harbor suddenly took down or something like that, what they would build back would be less. What I would need to do is just like start with what is there. And so if it's a fully demo, you just build back, sort of ship a thesis style exactly what is just there. Uh, so why, what was the decision to do this number rather than what is just there? All right.
Sure. Good question. Did you have one?
That was a good one.
So the reason why we chose the 1900 and the 1600 number was because that, those numbers got us as close to reasonably close as we could to the number of units that we needed to make up the difference between the 82 minus the 221 that we got from the CBD. If we had chosen a lot area per dwelling unit that more closely mirrored the units that are there today, those would have to come down further from 1900 and 1600. And in listening to the public and members of the planning boards, seems like you want to try to minimize the impact as much as possible. So that was what we were trying to do. Instead of marrying what's there today, we tried to say someone give attention. In fact, less than what's there today.
I guess that would be, and then just, I don't know. It's, I guess, more broadly, but than just you. To me, the least, the least change that would happen would just be to just zone what is there rather than zone what is less than there. So if there is any change, there would be a change that would be to part with her net zero rather than something that was.
Negative.
Yeah, negative, right? That would, negative is still a change rather than negative being the same. Good.
So if the planning board and eventually the town council would like us to adjust those numbers and increase the unit capacity, it takes two seconds and we're happy to do it. We're just trying to listen to the feedback and do the best we could to respond to that feedback.
My name's Brian Harson. I'm from District 3. I hope I can follow that. But a couple of questions as a concerned citizen. What are the responsibilities of the planning board in this particular scenario?
Our role here is to actually listen to all comments, take the advice of our consultant that the town has hired through grant process, make a recommendation for, I mean, what is our best path to compliance? Town council can vote whether they want to comply or not or totally throw away our recommendation and then choose their own. But our goal as planning professionals is to say, if we are to comply and employ anything, what would our professional recommendation be? And that's through mixing the ways.
So your intention is to put something forward?
Our intention is to make a recommendation.
Excellent. Um, next question about the, I think it was special fee for commercial properties in the central business district. Am I getting that right?
It's a fee, it's called parking luau, payment luau parking. It's in the code today, it is today, $20,000 to do to your parking demand.
Uh, and out of curiosity, how many people take advantage of that?
No one is ever used to it.
Okay, that is all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cassie. I'm from Resincense. Um, and I have on several occasions said you can put overlay in my neighborhood. The density is already there. So I'm one of those people that is a mythical human part. Um, I live in a triple decker. There are a lot of them in town. So I just wanted to know if there was information out there on how many lots in town are currently zoned residential, just like a total number, versus how many actually have a single family home built on them or a two-family home built on them or a building with three or more units on it? And I know that's a long, long question, so I don't expect an answer right now. But I just want us to think about how many areas in our town already have the density that's being considered and what would happen if your home burned down or there was some other emergency and it needed to be rebuilt? I actually looked into the code on this and you have one year to rebuild unless it is out of your control. Which means that most people, if you're in a triple decker and you have three owners, you're going to have to try and deal with your insurance, get everyone to agree on the costs and all of the other details, get an architect lined up and start construction within a year. And I do housing development professionally and I can tell you that's really, really, really challenging. So, um, I just want us to think about, um, even beyond 3A, what it looks like for our community's density and our zoning to match what is here right now and being used by all of our residents. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Celeste Mary Hewitt, Resincense. Also recently appointed to the Climate Council. Um, just a couple of points of clarification on my, for my own benefit. I got there a little bit later. So my understanding is that we're primarily proffering well-developed areas. The Seal Harbor and also Governor's Park area. So would this be received by the state and by the Secretary as paper compliance? Because it seems that unless there was something happening to undo the existing development, there's not currently an opportunity to develop all these sets. Is that accurate?
Uh, that's our, that's our goal. I'm the Eric answer.
Okay. Um, and so I guess my second part to that, Eric, is, um, is that something that they'll be receptive to? I mean, there's a lot of time, energy, resource and emotion put into this process and we don't want to be disingenuous from other way we follow the process. Is that something that's going to be received? Will we find ourselves at the 11th hour if, I mean, there's a lot of people are asking right now, wait, hold off, see other lawsuits go, wait till December and then get slapped down and, you know, be penalized for a disingenuous settlement?
Yes, this, this is paper compliance. Nothing's really going to happen. There's a lot of gray area in the regulations in the law. I think this will pass.
Okay. Um, and then the second piece, things that people are concerned about, whether something does happen to Seal Harbor, gets washed away and we rebuild. Um, people are concerned about, um, everything going, you know, wild west and going rogue and having six plus bedrooms to a unit. I think I heard you say earlier that existing, um, design review will still be coming into play even in instances with the overlay. Is that correct?
Well, it depends what path the property owner wants to take to rebuild. So they have, they would have two choices under this scenario. They can rebuild under the existing zoning and everything that's in Winthrop's by law would apply, that applies in that district. So if you have design standards, if you have special permit, they would have to go through that whole process all over again and all that added scrutiny. If they decided to leverage 3A overlay district, then they'd be responsible for following the rules that apply in that district, which haven't been fully set out yet. We're really just talking about dimensional requirements, parking requirements, setbacks, heights, things like that to run the model. As we had heard from the board, they were questioning, could you apply design standards and things like that? Those I don't think are in place for these districts yet. So that's something that, you know, you may want to consider. If those were in place, then the answer would be yes, they would have to follow those rules as well.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. So I think it's a logical step and a logical ask. I think, again, if, right, people have asked and you've responded, your job is to assess the task at hand, make the recommendation to the town council, and then the town council needs to take into consideration what the next step forward. It would be great if we could move this dialogue to a place where we understand what the best path is, assuming we can get to paper compliance or otherwise, whatever, how things wash out. And then we get to a point where people are replying their asks, right? They think people then verbalize their concerns, what worries them. If we could get to the step to say, if we're going forward, these are the limitations we'd like to see applied. We'd like to have existing zoning indexed into this offer. I think the biggest thing at hand right now is for us to be able to protect, um, you know, residents, property owners, right? Address concerns and put controls in place. I think the sooner that we can get to a place where we're having those conversations, the sooner we can relay a lot of concerns. And I know there's a undercurrent about state overreach to have a little bit of experience pushing back on state legislation. And in my background, and I get it. But I also think too that we could be trailblazers here and say, there's not a need for this kind of state overreach or this state control because I think they're acting out of fear. They have to go, they're trying to move forward and they're trying to put the hammer down. And there's been a lot of comments in the public domain. But I think if we model an ideal municipality that says, look, we hear it. I think there are those among us that would like the opportunity to have accessory units, additional living for elders or our children, additional, um, income. I'd like us to get to a place where we can talk about zoning that makes sense and maybe we can address it, give us more opportunity for more housing units without waiting for the state to come in and get us all run out of them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Stroh. I have a couple of questions for you all. In your experience in going to other towns, would you have done 3A like this? In other words, would you really think that this is the best way that the state could try and build more housing because they think we need it? I've heard, as an example, I've heard many other possibilities like, um, high-speed rail to Worcester. In other words, did we really think, did you think the state really thought through all the possibilities of how to make Massachusetts a model state Commonwealth to, to build housing and works for a lot of community, individual communities? We're very different than any other community. And by the way, I'm sure other communities have said the same thing to you. We're all different. But we do, you must say, we have Massport. We have the MWRA. We have our own unique transportation problems and other kinds of unique, you know, problems in our town. So I question to you, given that you've been throughout, you know, other communities in the state, if you were in charge of this law, what might you think outside the box would be better?
I'm not really going to answer that question.
I understand that. I mean, I know your job here is to try to figure out.
I mean, I think at the end of the day, we have a housing shortage in Eastern Massachusetts and the state was trying to do their best to come up with a way to get some units built. And I'm not saying that Winthrop hasn't done its job, because you have reduced housing. Uh, but there are a lot of communities out of that 177 that have not.
Yes.
And so at some point, I assume the state needed to drop the hammer and try to get some production because it's killing us. It's killing our economy. It's killing seniors. It's killing young people. Not literally killing them, but it's preventing them from staying here and becoming productive members of the economy and feeding jobs and, you know, all the strengths of Massachusetts of choice. And I think the state was trying to come up with a way. Maybe it's the best way, maybe it isn't. That's not for me to say. But I think that's at least what they were trying to do, so.
Yeah, I don't think, I agree. I don't, I don't have a lot of conspiracy theory in my blood. But I do understand that all of us who live here are struggling with this. Because first of all, the law is not clear. I'm not sure what it means for a unit owner, a very individual unit owner in any one of those areas that you mentioned. What it means for them if they wanted to increase the number of people that live there or change the number of bedrooms. or change the number of bedrooms, because the law does not state, in fact, the law states that you can increase bedrooms and you can increase occupancy. And so it's not clear, I think, to anyone here, what that really means to them, to us, to every person in this town. And I just, I think that's what you're hearing, it's unclear, we're worried, we want the best for Winthrop, we don't want to see, we're struggling, we already have so many units going up in this building without 3A. So I'm not sure that we don't have to find a way, you all can look at our own planning, forget 3A, just look at our own planning and make sure that we can afford to do all of this. That's how I point to it.
Hi, hi for me here, I'm Julia Waller, I'm a resident of Precinct Two, and I'm speaking tonight as a private resident, I just want to make that very clear. Some of the themes I've seen come up and I've heard over time come up a lot around the character and the look of the buildings that might get constructed under 3A, although, you know, please, on Seal Harbor and Governor's Park, it's pretty clear that it's not, it's hard to build. But I want to suggest to the board that we look into what Danbury did, actually, which was to incorporate a character-based zoning district as part of their 3A district, so that we didn't just look at the use of what can get built, but what it looks like. And that that would be incorporated, that could address a lot of what the Historical Commission brought up, that we're just gonna see these box buildings, which I admit, is what we've seen a lot, and there's really bad architecture out there, and I think that we can use this as an opportunity to build better, if there's an opportunity to build at all. So that's firstly. The second thing is really addressing affordability. 3A is not an affordability tool, I think we all know that, but can it be an opportunity for us to improve our zoning here in town by exploring things like, if it booms, our zoning organs? The state does set that ten percent limit, but even ten percent would be more than what we have today, which is zero. We require zero affordability right now. So let's look at that as part of this process, and if we wanted to more than ten percent, we could submit an economic feasibility analysis to do that. And then the third thing I just wanted to try to shine light on is this sense of distrust against, of the state, and who the state is, and why the state came up with 3A. And I wondered if it would be something we could explore, just to simply invite Secretary of Justice Lieutenant Governor here at Winthrop to a planning meeting, to a council meeting, to actually talk, tell that story, that we kind of missed. I think our first public meeting was in January, and we just sat there and saw this map of people's homes colored in different shades slated for redevelopment, and that was terrifying. We had no context. And you guys come up on the planning board, you guys, and we're looking at the maps, and looking at, you know, several different districts, but we never made that public and had that opportunity to share the story with the community. So we got off on the wrong foot, there was a lot of, a sense that this is just coming from who knows where. So if we have that opportunity to build back that trust, to have the state, quote-unquote, I would suggest the Secretary, Lieutenant Governor, who are really the housing champions, come to Winthrop, talk to us. Put a human face behind this, that there's not a bohemian, there's not a conspiracy of the state. As Eric said, it's grappling with a crippling housing crisis that affects all of us, and Winthrop's not gonna solve it on our own, 3A is not gonna solve it. It represents a tiny bear with her, and it's not perfect, but can we at least hear from the humans who put this forth on us? I think that would help our community through this process. Those are my suggestions. Just a quick clarification, could you explain what that would look like? Could someone in Seal Harbor turn their one-bedroom apartment into six bedrooms? And how would that actually work? Could that work?
I don't know the details of the Seal Harbor condo docs, but I would imagine it probably printed something like that, and this doesn't speak to a legal condo doc.
You could do a 3A, right?
This is just a zone, yeah.
Thank you, and thank you, Eric, for your hard work.
Hi, Clara Valle, Precinct Three, thank you for doing this. Clearly, paper compliance, or that we did not, not expect for new improvement down much whatsoever. But my point is to the owners, to the owners of the book that's in our, and the owners of President's Park and also in Harbors Park. I do believe that USP are governed by various strong HOA associations, and nothing will happen to your condos or your property if they, unless the condemnation allows it. Is that correct? Am I correct? On the 3A.
Would you mind just repeating the question?
Under 3A, if anything would change. All the people, because they're multifamily, large family, Coroner's Park and Seal Harbor, nothing would change, regardless of change on the interior of the product, which is one of the biggest features for some people here. Nothing can be done, because they're still governed by the HOA, the condo association.
Yes, I think it's important to separate zoning from condominium docs or HOA requirements. Those are two completely different things established by two completely different entities. One is a private document that regulates what happens in private condos and hallways and land. The other is set by the town, which regulates development and development standards. So zoning typically does not really have anything to do with condominium documents or anything like that. One example of where that might be would be something like age-restricted housing. If the zoning said in a certain district you cannot age-restrict, which 3A says, then if something's currently age-restricted today, it was done under a different, it done under that zoning at the time, nothing will change. If that were to blow down and someone were to use 3A, the town, I don't think, would be able to approve, A55 plus age-restricted, and all would use 3A since you can't do that. I would say, if someone has a one- or two-bedroom condo, let's say a thousand square feet, it would be very, very, very challenging from a lot of different perspectives and a lot of different regulations, and they get six bedrooms. A, every bedroom has to have a closet, every bedroom has to have a window, every bedroom has to have a press and e-brass, I don't think you could actually do that. There are also Board of Health and State regulations that regulate things like overcrowding, so you're not gonna have twelve people in an apartment, or twelve people in a condo. Like, there are other regulations outside of 3A, just like there are environmental regulations outside of 3A that deal with things like wetlands that would not be impacted by 3A. So maybe just, again, I'm not an attorney, I would ask your attorney, but there's a difference between zoning and condo docs. There are Board of Health regulations, there are overcrowding regulations that supersede anything that 3A is wanting to do. You can choose to believe that or not, but that's my position.
Thank you. So to conclude, it will take a lot of change and a lot of extreme circumstances for anything to actually happen to Seal Harbor or Governor's Park, even with 3A, is that right?
Yes, we have three hundred and ninety condos, you literally would have to have every owner decide to do something different. That seems like a urgently intensive.
PTO Precinct Three, we hope all the great colleagues and consultants are now in progress, this burden is putting on, I can't believe it. Before we waste any more time, I would request the planning board to recommend to the town council to say no, that's all. Just no, not we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, but not this. Right now, the state is, it's only complaining about it, and all these towns are just accepting it. We need more than one town complaining and worrying about it. We don't need to waste all of your time and all of your time and all of our money. The proper solution to this problem is just saying no.
I have a request. We're hearing from people that aren't lawyers, making speculations about what can and can't be done. It's pretty straightforward, read the three paragraphs of the law. There's a reason they said the size of the bedroom doesn't matter, the number of bedrooms doesn't matter, and the number of occupants don't matter. We cannot stand here and say, that's not gonna happen. The law specifically allows that, and we deserve in Winthrop to have a professional legal opinion, tell us rather than speculation. And then we need to get it in writing that condo docs will supersede any state zoning law, because otherwise we'd be led down a path that's not gonna be accurate, and we'll only find out that later. Get it in writing, that's the only protection we have.
Kathy Capuchio, forty-nine, Walden Avenue, Winthrop. So follow Bob Montwood, who's such a hell of a girl, just said. You know, we've heard a couple of times tonight that, you know, I'm on attorney, I'm on a zoning expert. To me, it's so, this is so simple, to be quite frank. You know, the fact that our consultant, and this isn't disrespect to our consultant at all, he's doing the job, or he seems to be doing the job, but the fact that he stated at this meeting that he went to the state and asked if the law is amended or changed, or the guidelines there are. Would Winthrop, or, let's just say, would Winthrop, would Winthrop have to comply? And the state is saying, well, we don't have attorneys? Okay, that's just comical. Also, the fact that we're talking about condominium documents, which again, as Carol stated, there is tons of case law that state that underlines zoning and absolutely supersedes condos. And again, so we're talking about all this, and again, this is not disrespect to our KG, but we don't know, heck, are the experts in the room. For the love of God, the state is asking us to comply with the law that the state can't even defend. They're saying to condo owners, get your own attorney, are you kidding me? And this whole idea, and if it wasn't so detrimental to Winthrop and other communities, but this whole idea of this is just about zoning, this isn't about building, I love that we have heard from our KG, and from the AG, and Lieutenant Governor, and so many other people, that this isn't just about zoning, this is about housing development. So let's stop with the BS around that, because it's comical, like, it's just comical. So enough with the nonsense. We are being asked to comply with law, a law and guideline, guidelines which have been changed four times. So we don't know what we're being asked to comply with. It's outrageous. And the fact that we have, again, exposing experts in the room that say that they're not an attorney, yet in the same breath, are pretty much giving legal advice, is outrageous. Enough is enough, let's get legal opinion on a bunch of stuff, because Winthrop is going to say no to this nonsense.
Hi, Cassie, Precinct Six. I just want to share something that happened to me at work that I think relates to a lot of the concerns people are having. We had a renovation to a building that was approved under the Building Code, and then there was a change to the Habitability Code statewide that would have been retroactive, and it would have meant changes to what people were and were not allowed to do as far as means of the press, and it would have changed the building design in a way we could not accommodate. There were enough people that came together and said, hey, this is actually gonna make many units of housing within the state unhabitable immediately, that they said, oh, we need to take another look at this and make sure that the fire code is what dictates means of the press, as it has been for many prior iterations of the code. So I would say that to the, we can just add six bedrooms or do whatever. There are many, 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 many codes that people have to comply with when they're doing development, and if you have a concern about something that your neighbor is doing within your building, the building inspector will know if they are allowed to do that under all of these different codes. Just one other way to switch those concerns.
So it was raised earlier that we have concerns about the MWRA in Massport and their impacts on the community, and how that ties in to zoning, development, and building. I've lived here for ten years, I live in Wood Shirley, I'm on the MWRA route. The trucks go by my house every single day. Okay, so first of all, where is the concern for Massport and Logan Airport when the Winthrop Airport Housing Committee has been up for three years? Where is the concern from residents about the airport? I have personally brought up before the town council and the town manager at multiple meetings, how we need stronger representation for Winthrop with Massport. Nothing's happened. Ten years. The second thing is the MWRA. I spent five months organizing a meeting, it was publicized at the MWRA. Four residents showed up. Where is the concern? The MWRA in Massport came up when this whole 3A thing came to us. That's when this started, to me, this was completely offensive and outrageous, that we're now saying we have concerns about Massport and the MWRA tying into the zoning. The town of Winthrop needs to put its money where its mouth is. If you're gonna stand here and tell me we have concerns about Massport and the MWRA, the residents of this town need to stand up, and they need to push the town council to get involved. And we need stronger representation with Massport, and we don't have it. So my point to that is, don't use the MWRA in Massport as a worry about development and zoning. This isn't one or 3A was ever brought up, before the state ever enacted this law. So if we're gonna take this forward, to what we need to turn about zoning and development, then we need to take the Massport issue and the MWRA, and not just tie it into this, we actually need to do something about it, because otherwise, where does talk end?
Diana Vance, Precinct Two. To Scott's point, he actually is someone who truly cares about the MWRA and the airport pollution here in this town, probably more than most. I will say, I totally disagree with the fact that it's our responsibility we elect certain officials to represent us and to make sure that we don't get pollution rained down upon our heads, that we have an Representation Act with Massport, not the MWRA, we haven't, and it's deplorable, absolutely deplorable. I have friends that have died from cancer from all of that pollution, and studies out there, that's beside the point. This meeting's about 3A, as of yesterday, Monday, July fifteenth, of one thirty-six. This decision is no longer in the hands of the town council, it is now in the hands of the people. And I hope that you will have a little bit of that all about, thank you very much.
Do you have a comment? Okay, I think after that note, we'll make a motion to adjourn. We don't have a date yet, I think our next hearing will be joining plenty more folks. Okay, we're enjoying the people in the town council meeting, we're targeting August fifth or sixth. So we'll post that on the website as soon as we confirm, that's the charter. So, motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Thank you very much.